Good evening, it's seven o'clock, it's time for the Eastline Planning Meeting. First on the agenda is the roll call, we have three commissioners are absent, so we have one alternate substituting for one of them. Let us do the roll call from right to left.
Tim Leducer.
Rich Gordon.
Brian Baumback.
Nick Menepace.
Thank you. Now, time for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up is a call for any additions to the agenda.
Yeah, so Chair, I have three, they're all very small, I will say, but I had three things that I had hoped to be able to mention during the meeting. One was about the edible riparian buffers that Director Geisell had sent us about. Though I was gonna ask us about something for the P O C D, one is about P O C D coordination, and then one was a small matter that is a constituent brought up to me, as a consistent problem that he was having, that I hope the board could see about and try and help him with.
Okay.
Under new business at the end, right?
Okay, we need a motion to add to the agenda. Under new business, if you need a motion, I guess.
Yeah. Make that motion?
You can make the motion, yeah.
Yeah, make the motion, I don't know if you need me to add all three of these, the two of them are just like a P O C D matter, and one is a constituent matter. But I can motion to add these to the agenda.
Okay.
Sorry, the constituent is about, well, it's quite a bit, it's about the quick deed issue related to property on Upper Kensington. Apparently, he and several of the other owners there are having a problem with them, with the town, and terms of, and the land trust in terms of coordination. I know Mr. Geisell's aware of it.
Any discussion on the matter, or any questions? Oh, sorry, do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the addition? Okay, all in favor of adding the additions to the agenda for new business, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Extensions? Okay, so it's three to one.
Yep.
Next up is call for public delegations. Public delegations, the time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission about certain matters, items, referrals, or applications subject to a decision by the commission. A public hearing or litigation may not be discussed. During delegations, the members of the commission will not directly answer questions or make comments. Anybody? Okay. Next up are reports, I don't think we have any communications. Zoning liaison, I don't think we had anybody able to attend the last meeting.
Yeah, is this schedule still right? Because did we ever actually approve this one? Because I know we had to fix it from the last time because there had some wrong dates.
That's revised.
Okay.
I think from the last meeting, they had been saying, is it gonna be in the liaison, I'm not sure if she knew.
Yeah, she told, I mean, the schedule, she's supposed to go to the one, this coming one.
She's out of town, I guess.
I can cover it if need be, on the 23rd?
Yeah, I'll check with her, see if she's able to.
She had asked me, I'm sorry, she'd asked me to swap with her for the March 20th and that one, I didn't think we needed to do it here, but yes, I was gonna do the one on the 23rd.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, ex officio, Don McKenzie, do you have any updates?
The only thing we have exciting happen that's public is we had the boat that was stranded a couple of weeks ago. Ended up in Giant Smith, and we hired a local contractor to pull it off. We're gonna salvage it, the gentleman couldn't pay to build. So, it just happened yesterday, it was finally pulled off yesterday, so.
Okay.
Pretty expensive bill to pull a boat off. Whoever the boat is in the property of, that's who has to remove it, so had it landed on someone's personal property, they have to remove it. But it's in the antico or in open water, so we had to be responsible for it to take it off. And it's gonna be salvaged, I guess, and torn up, it's a 1983 silver. It was on its way from Maine to Florida in January. And it wasn't insured.
To get it back, I guess.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. McKenzie?
Do we see any disputes with the state of Maine about this? We're gonna have a salvage, any piracy rules or anything going on here?
It was, we have a legal bill to sail, thank you, I have a legal bill to sail from the seller to the buyer, but it was never registered.
Oh, so that's great, so. Okay, I see, so that someone was sailing it down to be sold to this new person.
Him and his cat.
Yeah.
Anything else, sir? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Subcommittees, I don't think we have any updates for that. Chairperson's report, one thing I'd like to mention is Sandy Ginyak submitted her official resignation a few days ago. We're sorry that she had to leave, she had personal reasons for doing so. Basically, we have 30 days from the date of resignation to, you know, point replacement. I think the next meeting, though, is in February, after 30 days, so we have to. Thirty-three days, so I think great timing, but, so if we make a decision, if we make a decision, or have a meeting to appoint some, theoretically appoint someone, it'd have to be a special meeting, I guess, before that.
Okay.
No problem, so long as we have 24 hours of the agenda.
Right, we can do a Zoom call if we have to. If not, if not, we can always, if it doesn't go through by 30 days, then the Board of Selectmen will make a decision like they did last time, so.
Yeah, so I don't know if there's anyone who may want to reach out to the Board, see if there's anyone who's interested.
Right.
I was just wondering, Mr. Commissioner, or Mr. Chairman, excuse me, has anyone reached out to you about joining the Board? Yeah, I don't know if we've even made it public that we're having this yet.
Yeah, I mean, the seat just became vacant, we also have another vacancy, I believe, so.
As far as I know, we don't.
Yeah, only like two or three days ago that she officially resigned, so I haven't heard of anybody.
Some of the groups somehow advertised, or I've heard of like other committees.
Yeah, there's the Republican Democratic Town Committees, and usually many will go out to their own social media platforms and whatever kind of, you know, so whoever might be currently involved in local town politics.
Fortunately, the Eastline Democratic Town Committee, you know, Chair is not here tonight, as our alter, I would confess him.
I notified him of the Chair, I notified Kirk of the Chair.
That's good.
See what happens.
I guess I was, I'm sorry, I was more just asking, like, when do we want to schedule, because the third, I thought we did have, like, it was gonna be exactly 30 days, but I guess I forgot to account for the 31st or something. But that one is, so should we just let you know if we have, like, if we do hear from someone, like, when are we gonna call? Because I don't know, are we gonna call a special meeting if we don't have anyone?
If we don't have anyone, there's no point having a special meeting, but.
Okay. Okay, so we're just waiting for.
He said you have 24 hours to, we can. Post the agenda, and then.
Republican House Chair is there?
Okay. And Democratic Town Chair, well, he's not here, but he's all hold it on planning, so he's just aware, so. Let's just keep abreast on the situation. Yeah, just keep, put the word out, you know, that there is an opening for the position. Next up is the approval of the minutes, meeting minutes for December. Are there any comments on the minutes? I was not here. I just noticed one typo on the roll call for Cindy Collins.
Oh, yeah. There's a G in her name, when there's no G.
You don't have men for typos?
No.
Okay. Were there any other comments, or?
Any particular, I was just curious for the, oh, never mind, I see, I thought we had an error in there, but no worries, it's all set.
Would anyone like to submit a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the December 9th Eastline Planning Commission meetings, minutes.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes for the December 9th Planning Meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? Approved four to zero. Public hearings, we have none tonight. No subdivision, re-subdivision applications, no zoning referrals or municipal referrals, so. Next up on the agenda is old business, we discussed, are discussing the request for a bond reduction for the orchards at Eastline subdivision. I think we asked to, you know, calculation, you know, to show the amounts that they wanted to reduce, and the new total would be. Gary, Gary Geisell has submitted that.
So I provided you with a memorandum, it was finished today, dated January 14, 2025. Essentially, we are currently holding a total of $1.7 million in a bond. However, approximately $1,482,044 is in the form of a letter of credit. According to my review of that letter of credit from Liberty Bank, it was to expire on August 11th of '22, with the condition to be extended for an additional period of one year with the precedent of future expiration date unless the bank modified the pound. Sixty days prior to the expiration, they no longer elect to renew that letter, which I have not received any such notice. One year from August 11th, '22 is obviously August of 2023, and it appears that the letter of credit would be expired. However, again, I reiterate that we didn't receive any notice of non-renewal. On November 25th of '24, J.P. Marine had requested on behalf of the Orchards of Eastline Development, Inc., a reduction in the bond, particularly reducing the letter of credit and a portion of the public improvement bond that we held in cash, and bringing the total, for a total reduction of, I'm sorry, and the portion, they wanted to bring the cash portion to $243,289, bringing the total improvement bond to $430,919 for the completion of Pumpkin Grove and Arbor Crossing. The Public Works Deputy Director, and now Deputy Director and Town Engineer, Alex Close, has reviewed the plan of development for the above subdivision. In an email correspondence from Mr. Close to myself dated December 23rd, 2024, he indicates a public improvement bond in the amount of $430,919 would be sufficient to cover public improvements associated with Pumpkin Grove that still remain to be completed by the applicant developer. The amount would also include the remaining improvements to be completed on a portion of Arbor Crossing from the intersection of Plum Hill to the intersection of Partridge Court. And as a result, the, due to the letter of credit having been expired, the Orchards of Eastline Development, they immediately posted an additional cash bond in the amount of $312,630 on December 4th, 2024, bringing the total bond amount to $430,919, which is, according to Mr. Close, sufficient to cover the remaining public improvements associated with the completion of Pumpkin Grove and Arbor Crossing. There's a final table there, shows we hold $125,000 for erosion sedimentation controls, and roughly $430,919, shouldn't say roughly, exactly, $430,919 for public improvements, bringing the total to $555,919. So I did provide you some draft language for a reduction in the bond, if you were to entertain that. I would note that I anticipate that Pumpkin Grove will be completed next year. Final paving, and they'll look to turn the road over to the town. They may look to turn the remaining portion of Arbor Crossing over to us sooner than that, but we haven't had that, they haven't asked us to accept that portion of Arbor Crossing yet, so they still have some sidewalk work to do, as well as some, I think, some streetlights to install on that section of Arbor Crossing from Plum Hill to Partridge, so.
I'm having trouble seeing how we got to 1.725.
So we had a, we were holding cash bond in the amount for erosion sedimentation controls in the amount of $125,000. We hold a public improvement bond in the amount in cash for $118,289. Add that to the letter of credit, which was $1,482,044, bringing the total to $1,725,333.
But aren't we retaining that $125,000?
Yes, we're retaining the $125,000 in cash for erosion sedimentation controls. On top of the $118,289 in cash.
We're retaining that as well.
And they posted an additional $312,630 in cash.
Yep.
That gets me.
555. Shouldn't that be 1.482?
No, you'd be releasing the letter of credit. The reduction is a reduction of $1,725,333 for public improvements.
If you look at the fourth to last, third to last page, it kind of breaks it down a little more. Just before the Liberty Bank letter.
Losing the letter of credit, there's a little bit of an increase in the public improvement bond, and the erosion sediment bond stays the same.
Correct.
And Mr. Close, as you mentioned, felt it was sufficient to.
Correct, I believe that correspondence is in the packet. Should be. Put it in there, I can add it to the record.
Four pages back, I'm sorry, yeah.
Right now, it's, the total is 555,919. So if we had to reuse portions of the sedimentation control bond, we could. But we shouldn't have to do that, I don't anticipate, I wouldn't use any of that. It's a pretty well-trained site. Yeah, half a million dollars. Do you have any questions?
Reading this letter.
So I would just note that, as Richie pointed out, that Mr. Close does feel that the amount is sufficient. I would also note that we have an erosion sedimentation control bond, should we need to use portions of that to complete public improvements, we could. It's a little bit more of a process, because those funds were allocated specifically for erosion sedimentation controls. But all in all, I think the developer has been pretty compliant as far as their construction and the work that they've done. Every time the town has asked them to sweep the road or make improvements, they've done it relatively, in a timely fashion. I would also note that just about every home in that community is not sold for less than $500,000. So in terms of a tax-based addition, while they may generate schoolchildren, I think there's more homes without schoolchildren in that neighborhood than there are with, I could be wrong. So it's certainly been a benefit, I think, to the town.
Does anyone want to spend more time on any documents?
Bless you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions or concerns?
I think Gary just answered a couple of them for me when he was talking there, so.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I think you and I were the only two that were here the last time when we had asked Mr. Geisell to get all this information for us already.
Yeah.
You too, and then Mr. Scott.
Mr. Scott asked, also.
Yeah. Well, I just mean of.
Of the four?
Of the four of us, yeah.
So I can entertain a motion to, regarding the reduction in the bond? There's a opposed motion resolution on the page two of the notification.
Probably use those numbers in your motion.
Use, yeah.
Right. So, I just want to make sure. Okay. Yeah. So are we officially moving into, it's gonna have the bond reduction, is the, I'm not using the right phrase, we're having the bond reduction for $1,725,333, and then as well, we'll hold the bond for $555,919.
Right. And we're releasing the letter of credit.
Okay. I just don't know if I'm using the terminology correctly.
Yeah, so, yeah, the total bond amount will be $555,919.
Okay.
Page two.
All right.
Is anybody?
I'd like to make a motion for us to, then, correct me if I, we're going to hold the following bond amount for the public improvement associated with Pumpkin Grove and the portion of Arbor Crossing, extended for the intersection of Plum Hill to the first intersection of Partridge Court of $555,919.
Second.
So you want to hold that, yeah, I see, I'll wait for the discussion.
Yeah, we seconded. I'm sorry, I thought we were asked to propose the motion with the full numbers.
Yes.
Just reduce the public improvement bond by 1.725333.
And I think there was a second?
Yes.
So, you ready for discussion? So I would just note that, yes, the total bond amount will be $555,919, $125,000 of which is for erosion sedimentation controls, $430,919 of which is for the public improvements.
Any further discussion? You need to make an amendment to the motion to?
Clarifying the numbers?
Oh, he's clarifying the numbers?
Let's clarify the numbers.
Okay. All right, move to vote?
Do we?
All right.
Put the numbers in, or just?
Do I, I don't think I need to amend it.
Yeah, he doesn't need to indicate.
He doesn't need to amend that.
Yeah, I guess for discussion purpose, we can just indicate that the bond's being reduced by $1,725,333.
Okay. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? Okay, we've approved the motion four to zero. Okay, we're still under old business, subdivision regulation, Section 4, application submission procedure that we've been discussing for a while. Gary, you said you were waiting for more information from Commissioner, Attorney Zamarca on that?
Yes, I was gonna talk to Attorney Zamarca, unfortunately, in December, Attorney Zamarca decided to retire. So it's gonna be a bit of a change of who I'll be working with, I may bring this up instead with Tim Weisdell. This'll be kind of a different landmark to handle and do stuff. So, that kind of put a little delay in this, I also need to do my own homework and research and pull up the original approved subdivision maps. But with that, the fact that this was on our agenda at the last meeting, I did include in your packets an correspondence that was received by Attorney Gary, sort of yesterday. I have not read the legal packet, but I think in essence, he's looking to, I guess, ask the commission to, I guess, abandon or dismiss the claim that this parcel on Catbird Lynch in open space. The essence of the matter, so we'll look into it, I don't know exactly the status of this parcel. My periphery review of that document, I didn't see any of the original plans that were approved from the initial subdivision. I have a parcel in open space, so there may be some information that Mr. Gary is lacking in that, so again, we have to do some research. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay, so.
All I have for now on those?
So for all three subdivisions, they, do more research on that? The open space issue?
I believe the course of action is if we do that, if we are, if we're supposed to be deed in open space, we'll reach out to the current landlord and see if we can't perpetuate that, and if that's not possible, then we have to go down the further legal action. Avoid that, make the family possible.
Okay. Any questions, or?
No.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is new business. Mr. Menepace brought up a few issues.
Yeah, this, the only reason I specified is the difference is Mr. Geisell had sent us, I believe, it was all of us, an email about the edible riparian buffer, which I will say that I went into with no knowledge of what that was gonna be about, but I thought it was extremely interesting. It was all about how, in our P O C D, we have language about riparian buffers, which is essentially blocking off for the waterway, so that there's vegetation in between this area, and I thought it was, it looked very good, they went over why that's important, but they had basically emphasized that, I'm sorry, I don't know if I'm too far away from the mic. They had emphasized of how these edible riparian buffers can be a really good service for the town to be advertising for homeowners and for agriculture, because they're basically saying that these areas can be used to, for agroforestry. Some of them, they're growing apples, some of them are their focus on more of like native plants, but they basically went through this whole process and explained how that not many towns truly have a lot of language, that really even in the state, we don't have a lot, that it comes from the national, nationally, but not many people are aware that this is something that they can do, and it was really just a notice, I don't know if this was at any point considered for the P O C D, or if this is just new information that, you know, I know that, Tim, I don't know if you were there when they did the P O C D as an alternate.
No, that was right before me. I did affordable housing.
Yeah. Well, I think, Brian, were you as an alternate then, as well? Okay, I just was curious if.
I don't know if that was, Gary, do you remember if that was discussed on, I don't remember.
Not in great detail, I think we have sections of the P O C D that talk about riparian buffers.
We do, I went, yeah, I went through it.
As far as agriculture, I think, you talk about agriculture, and I think there was some recommendations in the Liberty Value Study, that if the town was interested in adopting agricultural zone or promoting agricultural use, maybe consider zoning, overlaying that type of something. But didn't speak specifically to the.
Yeah, I suppose in this, it didn't have to just be losing this for farm, like, large-scale farming. It was also just as an idea, like, this is something they very much presented, that if you're owning a home and it's on one of these areas where it might be good for an edible riparian buffer, or, excuse me, a riparian buffer, that if you do these edible ones, it's a way that you can convince some people who, like, hey, this is a way to be productive with this land, and it's not just this space that you can't use. And I know we do have some farming that occurs for our town, but like, this is, might be a good, like, advisable, it's really just a note of, I don't expect us to reopen the P O C D to be able to add this, but I thought it was very interesting, and it was very informative for this, and I think it might be of good use for our P O C D in the future, and of anyone who comes up with some type of issue like this.
That was in the presentation that was at the community center?
Yeah, senior center. Yep, I said, and I don't know if there were, I don't know. Yep, I said, and, um, I don't know if there was, I don't know, I just, I thought the board would be, like I said, I had no, I put edible riparian buffer. My wife asked me, like, what is that? I really don't know what an edible riparian buffer is, but I thought it was a very good presentation. They offered seeds of the kind of things, they went through the native plants that were great for this, they went through the near native plants that go this, when especially with, with climate change, they were like, these are some of the ones that are going to be like working better as temperatures war, or the average temperature is going up in the future. It was, like I said, it was extremely informative and I also had been, I talked to some people there who had said that this, it was just a constituent came up and it's like, hey, this might be a good way for you to convince, uh, some of the people who aren't currently following the idea of having a riparian buffer that like, hey, this is a way for you to be productive with this land instead of it just being pure vegetation.
Well, next P O C D is 2030, I guess 2029 we start working on, but basically we always ask.
Ms. Pang, I would like you to remind me. Yes, yes.
If I'm still around, I remember.
In four years, please bring this up again.
We always get, we always, we always ask for feedback from stakeholders, so I just, the people on the committee.
No, but I, like I said, I just thought it was really an interesting idea and I was surprised that they said, like, very few municipalities or states have much in the way of dedication about this. And it was something that, you know, I honest, I can tell you I'm putting it in and saying.
You're aware of any, any other P O C Ds like?
I, I asked them and they said that they didn't know how many had it. And I had asked this, I could tell you that I asked the state government and they said they didn't know either. So I know, I can tell you, I put it in as a, a language for a, uh, study to be done at the state level to hopefully see if we can provide guidance for towns in the future on this. Cause it seems like a very good idea.
Pretty thorough agricultural section and we had.
Yeah.
Few experts on it and then, yeah, I think it was brought up.
The other one was just, I had talked to, I believe, Mr. Geisell, I talked about this, which is some of the P O C D coordination with other boards. I know this is something that's happened in the past, but it does feel like, right now, like I, it, it feels like in talking to some of these other board members I have just in passing for this, that many of them are not really aware of what we are asking for them through our P O C D of these boards in the future. I was hoping to see us kind of restart what had apparently happened years ago of trying to offer some coordination and compliance, like, I guess, goals or communication with some of our, like, um, as I suppose especially zoning, but like this applies for any of our, our boards here and commissions in town, that this would seem like something that, that some of these commissions do not understand the P O C D. They may not have like to be, I mean, a lot, many of them have been elected or appointed since and may not have even like seen what the P O C D is. And I don't know, like, so I very much like to see that our board is providing guidance to them so that we can try and say like, oh, this is something that we talked about in the P O C D. Because I, as again, I was talking to, I can't remember who it was, um, on, um, zoning and they had no idea that this was, it might have been inland waterways, it was one of the two. And they had no idea that that was something that we had mentioned in the P O C D. And I was like, oh, well, it's there.
You can always fight feed, feedback. I know some of the, uh, I guess some, I, I know with the historical society, a lot of the, a lot of the proposals that we had are, we're trying to implement with the museum.
Mm-hmm.
And everything and, uh, you know, we had, you know, we had some further discussions after the P O C D.
Yeah.
You know, in the past, usually P O C D comes out and it kind of maybe falls by the wayside.
Okay.
Anyone, anyone really should keep abreast and be, you know, keep abreast of what's in the P O C D.
I, I agree, I think they should be.
I, I think as fellow committee members, it's important to just let each other know what documents we should familiarize ourselves with, which is what happened to me when I started this. Someone handed me a printed copy of the P O C D zoning regulations and I re, I read them. So I, I, I think there's, this, I don't think there's really a disconnect, I just don't think we encourage each other enough to read the documentation and understand it, you know? I, I don't think we need to rewrite the book here, but, um, I just think some simple, you know, encouragement and, and, and help, you know, with each other is, is all we really need, you know? So that's just my, my thoughts there.
I agree, this, uh, Tim has had a, like, a very good point on that one. And I think it, I, I guess my point is, I think it would be nice of us as the planning commission to maybe offer ourselves up of like, hey, here's the, the, if you're unfamiliar with the P O C D, make sure you ask us, you know, or ask Mr. Geisell, I suppose, for this one. This might be a good time for us to try and send this out to some of our ones and kind of make sure that we're all on the same page.
Yeah, which is true. When appropriate, try to, you know, communicate that the P O C D, we also had the affordable housing, uh, you know, subcommittee meeting. I think which, I think you mentioned they're going to have to have, we're having a new, maybe later in the year, they're going to, every, every two year, it's every five years, right? So it's coming up at the end of the year again.
So as we hit the end of the year, we're going to start looking at updating that before we update the P O C D. I think with that in mind and just kind of hearing, you know, looking at how we coordinate and implement the P O C D. Past chairs set, you know, that was their kind of goal is how do we, now we have this great document, how do we implement it so that it doesn't sit on the shelf and come short of hope? That said, I, I think the best that we could probably do without stepping our toes is to send correspondence out to these boards and commissions and say, look, we do want to take the temperature here. And, and how are you making out that these are the recommendations that were put forward in our P O C D? Where are you at? And were you able to accomplish any of these? Are there, you know, barriers to your goals, you know? If you recall, it's, oh, I think Tim was, you weren't here. That.
The P O C D, I wasn't.
Steering committee, which was formed from, uh, members from, maybe two members from each commission. So each commission was involved in the makeup of that document. So that being said, I think to answer the question, the reason there may be some lack of awareness is just, just the membership wasn't involved.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think, um, I would put a little on this on, on the volunteers themselves and say, well, as part of your volunteer, you have to dedicate yourself on the ongoing of the town. Part of that might be looking into the bags of the P O C D and things like that. So, although we can help facilitate that, I agree, we should, we should work to do that. I'm more than happy to go to commission meetings and give them a rundown of the P O C D on, as it pertains to where commissioners are. That's, that, that's helpful to them. I'm sure it sounds like maybe you and Nick would want to do that and you'd have to allow this on the, on the P O C D. But I'm more than happy to, to do it and if they have questions.
Yes, and I would say, I said, I don't know if that's the impression, I, I definitely don't want to come in here and tell them like all the things they're doing wrong. I just want to help people see like, oh, there's this great guidance that's in here, are you aware of that?
Yeah.
I, I think most of the boards or commissions are relatively aware of the guidance that's there. I think they, what are the barriers that they're facing from actually achieving it? Cause I, that's what I find in my work is that usually the financial barrier or some other large hurdle. And that's why these things don't get implemented.
Yeah.
Play and use projects take a long time because of that. Just my experience.
Okay. Oh, sorry.
Don't have affordable, issues with affordable housing since we did the P O C D and had the, uh, other affordable housing subcommittee, so, you know.
In addition to that, we've just recently adopted it, is that right?
Yeah.
Right.
That's another layer of, uh, interest to see that. We then do probably our next P O C D.
Right.
Is it Mr. Geisell, who, which, um, which, which boards and commissions do you think would be most benefit from, well, this?
Well, I mean, I, I don't know if there's any one to, more than most benefit, I just, I think they could all, I mean, they all have a role and a place in the planning development, but they set up recommendations for them. We've got a matrix that breaks it all down.
Yeah.
Boarding, commissioning, department needed.
That's a good document to familiarize yourself with, there's that big chart with who's responsible for what and who's not responsible for certain things.
Yes, it's a pretty, it's a, it's a pretty in-depth, uh, analysis there of who's responsible for what. I'm not sure where the, where the first start, what it takes to have that be applicable. I, I obviously work closely with zoning, but when we repot this and bat these things back and forth. You know, there, there's in terms of affordable housing, I think that's a part of discussion. And the question is, what's the solution or what, what modifications do you want to make in terms of policy and regulation that's going to impact or positively impact that, that issue for us? So, um, you know, I, I think the answer to the, the housing question unfortunately is to build more houses. Yeah, and so I'm not, you know, a mall, I think there's a large population of people who don't want to hear that, but that's kind of a predicament.
Yeah. Is it possible for us in that one just to, like I said, in that way, like message our, um, I don't know, like, I don't know if there's a way to blanket email everyone and all of the commissions. I don't think they would necessarily, just email our commission and board, like, chairs and ask where we're finding these difficulties?
What I would do is I would go back to kind of what I'm familiar with and that's how I approach the last P O C D. How we blanket it each board and commission, how we send individual memorandums to each board and commission and say, this is what we're looking for. Can you provide us any data and information to update us on your, any progress?
Yeah.
And then we'll have to assimilate all that. The good news is, uh, hopefully, uh, end of the week, we can put the clothes on the internship positions. Hopefully we'll have an internship and you can help assist, at least start that process, code that data.
Yeah. Okay. Is that something that we're, do we need to, to vote on asking about doing that? Okay.
If, just by consensus, if that's what you're looking for.
So if your interns on your, yeah, office can do some of the research, I mean, a lot of the, a lot of the, uh, point of contact have changed since we did the P O C D, so they may not be as familiar.
So between now and the next meeting, I'll develop that correspondence, get that out the door and then whether or not we hear anything by the next meeting, I don't know, but, um, maybe by the March.
Okay.
We'll have some of those processes.
All right, and, um, I don't mean to keep us all here for, I know we're used to our, a nice, quick and tidy planning commission, but I had one, uh, thing that it can, I know, um, I know Mr. Geisell's familiar with this one, cause I know I, I brought it up to him in the past, is there is a constituent reached out to me a couple of times as a planning commission member. He actually asked, I, I told him like the, the meeting, I met with him earlier today and he asked when he can come to a planning commission meeting. I said, well, it's tonight and he's not able to do that tonight, but, uh, this is, um, Matthew Sardo at, at fifteen Upper Kensington. And I was, he has had an issue of, well, trying to get this res, resolution fixed of where his property line ends and where the, um, the land trust is. And I know that's not really our area of expertise, but I was a little surprised as he had told me that apparently that's something that several properties in that area have had it where the housing has essentially been built on land that is supposed to belong to the East Lime Land Trust. And I was a little surprised to hear that. And he said, he's just the, he, he claimed that he's the only one who is just simply still bringing it up. And I've talked to, uh, Mr. Geisell, I've talked to, um, um, sorry, First Selectman Dan Cunningham about it. He said there needs to be a quick deed resolution. I'm, I was a little, I can understand his frustration because he says this has been a process he's been doing for about two years. But I was definitely surprised to hear that there is apparent, allegedly this might be a problem on other houses. I know this, this area has a lot of little confusing streets and, um, I think it's technically nearby, one of our only, um, private roads on here. But I wasn't sure if that was something that the commission has run into in the past or if Mr. Geisell, if like you have more information?
Usually not something that, that's happened in the past, but I'm trying to. So this is the, uh, Mr. Sardo's lot, this is stripped back here is the parcel I conveyed to the land trust. Uh, the town of East Limes, the Highlands, the Derrills, the Long Peace. So what's interesting here is these lots along the eastern side of Upper Kensington have been subdivided, re-subdivided, as well as there's been several lot line revisions. So this configuration here resulted in a lot line revision, um, that I approved in my office administratively. This portion for the plan that I approved was to be deeded to lot fifteen. Thus I approved the plan. So, uh, this portion used to be a part of the portion to the south. Apparently when Mr. Sardo's lot got conveyed to Mr. Pizaya, uh, it didn't get conveyed with this because they were back taxes, my understanding that were owed. And Mr. Pizaya was not willing to pay the back taxes because it was his responsibility. Instead, the developer, the landowner at the time, my understanding, has conveyed it to the land trust. I think, I don't know if that was in reference to avoid tax, paying the taxes or thinking they convey it to the land trust, they're a nonprofit, there are no taxes being paid. But I would still think there were back taxes that were owed by the landowner prior to being conveyed to the land trust, a nonprofit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a lot of work for what it sounds like.
So, uh, I've since wrote, Mr. Garrity, the attorney that was representing the original landowner, a letter indicating that this was supposed to be conveyed to lot fifteen. It's now a violation of what I think is the subdivision rights in the approval. He argues that it's not and that he conveyed it to a nonprofit and it's basically functioning as open space. I still argue that it's incorrect. It belongs with lot fifteen. And I think in an effort to try to correct this, um, in my conversation with First Selectman, he suggested we reach out to the land trust and see if they'll just convey it to lot fifteen. As for the other lots and whether or not there's a situation where, uh, that's similar, where man got conveyed to the land trust and they're built upon, I'm not aware of that specifically. I do know there's this land piece back here that's owned by the land trust. There was a portion of this, of these three lots that were a part of that, that with this subdivision, it ended up in this configuration. So that may have been the confusion where there was land owned by the land trust, although owned by the land trust, there was no conservationism in it. So without the conservations, I mean, they could buy, sell, develop like any other landlord. I think once they just got reconfigured, they just ended up with this little strip of land here. There's currently houses being built, uh, on all of these lots. So there's fifty, uh, homes within that subdivision. So I think what will end up is just having this one little issue here to resolve. If Mr. Sardo continues to inquire about it, uh, and I still claim, I believe that it's a violation of the approval.
Okay. And I just like, I guess I, I, I feel for, for Mr. Sardo on this one is just because I'm, like, this sounds like this has been going on a while. And is there any real end in sight? Cause I don't, I don't want to see the town or, I guess the land trust be, be sued over, over something like this.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree. I don't know, you know, I can't state specifically whether the end's in sight, I don't know where that is, you know, depending on how we deal with the land trust.
Okay.
Their, the conveyance of that.
All right.
If that's what I can tell you.
Okay.
Pursue it. I don't know that the land trust has been for yet, I haven't reached out to them.
I know that, from my understanding is that that's why I asked for this one before it, is that they, the, uh, Mr. Sardo has had difficulty getting in trust, in touch with the, the land trust about this.
I did have a conversation with Mark Carlson, who is the active chair of the land trust about this, um, and he said, yeah, why don't we just convey it? And he left it at that, so it seemed like he was open to it.
Yeah.
So I think if, uh, you approach it in a public way.
Okay. Great, thank you. I appreciate everyone's patience in trying to get this resolved. All right, that's it, me.
Anything else?
I'll just make a quick comment here. I just feel like a lot of this commission's time is being misused for inquiries and discussion about things that are not on this agenda. I know we added it in as new business in a simple email or a discussion with, uh, a representative, rather than bringing it up in a meeting where people are volunteering their time, uh, would be appreciated.
Noted.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, I guess that's it. No, no, no new business, uh, I guess I can entertain a mo, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you.